And I'll say a word to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Q. We'll be called meeting to order. The first item is going to be excused to excuse Darian Wobbs.
So.
Second. Okay. All the bearers say aye.
Aye.
All those say aye. District mission statement. Norris School District in collaboration with our communities and families provides a safe, positive environment that empowers students to explore, engage, and grow into lifelong learners responsible for their citizens. But in meeting plot, do we need to go over that? Is that? Skip over that. We don't have a student representative tonight. We'll get into administrators' reports.
So we did ask them, due to the weather, to just hang out at home, but they did submit their written reports.
You know, and I know they aren't here, but I had a question. I noticed on the intermediate school, they raised forty thousand dollars for this literacy initiatives. What was that? I mean, that's a lot of money to raise.
They had a read-a-thon.
That was.
Man, that's huge.
And I know it's the intermediate and the elementary, right? If I got that right, but I mean, I was just, whoa, you know. I mean, I could see, you know, a couple thousand dollars as being successful, but whoa.
Yeah. The last, they do it every other year, and the last time we did it was two years ago, and we had about the same result, so it was.
That's awesome. Okay, now, and the next question I have is, where does that go to? It says literacy initiatives. I mean, what does that tell me?
So some of the things that they do is they bring in authors, and those are very expensive, so they'll bring in an author and have an author visit. They might do like the one book, one school, where everybody in the school reads the same book, so they purchase the books for all the kids, those types of things, anything that has to do with reading or literacy, they put that money towards that.
Okay. And the other thing was, was the book vending machine. Explain this book vending machine.
So cool.
I'm just, I just, I just wondered, okay, do they just buy them out of there, or just, you know, what is this?
It's that, well, you can have, it's teammates related.
It's their teammates.
Yeah, it's teammates, but I mean.
But it was given to us by teammates. You know, we have to have a.
Marian got a grant.
Well, yeah, and it's money that teammates had for, and I think only seventeen in the. Yeah, it's a sad thing, yeah. Yeah, Harvard got one.
But did they buy books out of this vending machine, or what? I mean.
I think they gave them to him.
They give them to them and as rewards, like when they draw, I know when Brooke draws on a Monday morning, our Titan, they're Titan Award winners or whatever, they can choose a book out of there, and then they use it for other things as well.
Well, it's for teammates that, originally, it came about because of pandemic and how kids were behind, and so they wanted to address the reading issues with third and fifth graders. So they chose a targeted group of, they wanted to start with third graders who were below grade level reading, and then they wanted to try to use this to help move them forward a little bit. So it's those kids, those kids that have teammate, that get those books for free, and they also get a big box of books, or I should say, the school gets a tote of books, and then the kids get a little bag of books too. Really, some really great books. I looked through all the books, I think after the premiere door.
In ten.
Yes. But anyway, once the, once the vending machine is empty, it is our responsibility to fill it, so there is, it didn't cost anything initially to set it up, but eventually we'll have to.
I saw that each of the teammates gets to pick a book, or whatever.
Yeah, just that certain group. It's not all the teammates. It's just that certain group. But anyway, it's new this year, and so.
Kids love it.
Yeah, my boyfriend here is really excited about it.
Yeah. I bet, yeah. The other thing I noticed is how some of the administrators tied everything they did in this to a strategic plan, and I haven't really noticed that before. I mean, is that new?
Oh, we focus on it a lot with our school improvement process, and so that's kind of, it kind of flows through there.
Yeah, but they made specific, says and says.
And a lot of, and again, as we, year one, adoption and implementation, Rhonda, and Chris has been doing an amazing job at this too. Our goal is not to recreate all the work when we present to the SOC committee in June, but it's more of, we're creating the evidence as we go, so that it's more of just, we're going to share the work that we've done, rather than having to go all the way back to May and present in June. So, yeah, a lot of our conversations have centered around that this year, that measurement.
The other thing, I had a question on the high school. What is a Fred Ford? Explain a little bit more about the freshman service day.
So I can talk a little bit about it. I don't know tons about it, but I know that the kids go to different places. They've done it in a lot of different ways. One of them that they've done is the shoe drive.
I saw that they took about shoe drive.
Then they go there and they, so in the past, I'm not sure if the intermediate does this again this year, but they will collect shoes, and then they collect shoes all throughout the city. Any kind of shoe, it can be used, one shoe, all shoes, whatever, they take all of them. They're taken to the mission, then actually freshman class goes up there and they help sort them. So it's a community service day.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you prefer, it's a shoe.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Okay, that's all, okay.
Two good questions.
Okay, anything else? Administrator report? Public comment? Say none, I don't have to read that. And we're not having a curriculum report, then?
Nope, so we're gonna move Darian and Heather to our next meeting, so we'll be doubled up, just so everybody knows. We're gonna have our CTE curriculum folks that are gonna come and present, and Darian and Heather will be here to present, so we're just gonna double it up. You're rolling, Jim.
Yeah, super dentist report.
Sliding up the eyes.
All right, super dentist report. Upcoming dates. No school on the fourteenth because of Valentine's Day or, that is the cop day for parent teacher conferences. Sunday and Monday, Jim, Gary, and I will be traveling out to Carney for the NASB president's retreat. February seventeenth is professional development, so no school for kids. March twelfth is our regular Board of Education meeting, and then I'm gonna pass around the open meetings workshop. Gary is signed up to attend the one in Carney. Jim is signed up to attend the one in Lincoln. So if you're interested in attending an open meetings workshop, I will go to either or, and then there's also a finance workshop that I'll send around. And Jim is signed up for the one in Crete.
I'd like to do that in Crete, too.
Okay. The last thing I would say is thank you. It was difficult, but we're just gonna, Marcia's gonna come to us on April ninth, that's before our April board meeting, where she'll do our retreat with the focus on our board handbook pilot that we're doing for NASB. And we have submitted a proposal to present that work with Marcia at the state conference next year. So, we have to get it done, essentially is what that is. So, all right, those are your names. Celebration of excellence, as we've communicated, just another congratulations and shout out to Katie Dormbas. The Norris High School Advanced Chemistry Teacher and Science Department Head, selected by the National Science Foundation as a recipient of the Presidential Award of Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. So, again, huge honor for her, and so she'll get a trip to Washington DC and a ten thousand dollar award from the National Science Foundation.
She needs to attend our meeting so we can properly congratulate her.
We do, and we will get her.
That's amazing.
We will, we will bring her in, and we will recognize her in March. Good idea.
Now, even more phenomenal is the fact that Norris had two.
Yes, correct. Yep.
I mean, that, that is just shocking.
Yeah.
To have one, it's shocking.
For Norris.
But that's shocking.
Last time I checked, too.
There's only one, one hundred and ten in the entire.
Yeah, correct.
So, that's true. You know, think of those numbers. That's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it was two per state.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, fantastic.
Right here.
And well deserved. She does a fantastic job.
She does.
Personnel updates.
Yeah, I have a few updates to give. We're making the change with this being an action item, seeking your approval here, so I'll review the updates. Included on the, on Spark are the basically contracts for teachers, as well as resignation letters and retirement letters as we have received them. So, I am pleased to recommend the hire of Kate Myers, a high school math teacher, Haley Ranzier as our SDS teacher at the high school. Ashton Brewer is our new elementary and intermediate life skills teacher, and Jill Rice as our middle school counselor. Change of teaching assignments, as you know, down below Jeff Reed, we thank him for all he's done. He's had an amazing career here at Norris School District, and he's retiring at the end of this year. Polly Robinson will be replacing him at the high school, which means Elena Kearns will be going to fill that position at the middle school. And that's really due to Elena's current position in fourth grade. We're going down to eight sections next year, so she did not have that position. She'd expressed interest in this position, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Morgan Johnson, Coaten Gromwold, Sue Hartman, and KJ Downey have all tendered their resignations, so seeking approval on that. And then we have some extra duty resignations down there as well. Taylor Schilling, Micah Sundberg, and Ty Twirling. One of the things I do want to, want to address, and Mrs. Kearns and Mr. Rice have done a really great job of this, but her policy eighty-two fifty-one, that is our nepotism clause. So essentially, with Elena moving to the middle school and being under the supervision of Jamie, and Jill being hired and working in the same building as Matt. Jamie did a really nice job for her policy. She had to basically provide written disclosure to Dr. Joel and myself, which she has done, and then we have to make sure and notify you, the board, up now, which is, which is what I'm doing now with those different instances there. So assuming everyone's okay with those, I'm just seeking a motion to approve all personnel matters.
I think I have a question.
Yes.
Good with all that, but yeah. So Downey and Hart, like Hartman, Sue Hartman, I know has done a great job. Is she going somewhere else?
Sue, Sue Hartman is, yeah, Sue Hartman does, is a fantastic teacher for us, and I actually haven't had a lot of direct contact with Sue, but I know Mrs. Kostanik had said that, I think she has a new grandbaby on the way, and she has some really great aspirations to be a children's author. And so she is stepping away from teaching to be able to pursue that passion and spend more time with family.
Got it. How about Downey? Because he's been a big part of the, he was a big part of the football program this past year.
Yeah, KJ, KJ did help serve as a, as a coach, and he's actually helping the spring and track as well, and so KJ has been fulfilling the SDS position at the high school. And so working through it with KJ, our desire was to find somebody endorsed in the content that was taught, and so Mr. Sagerman and I have been pretty upfront with KJ on. You know, if we find somebody that's endorsed, we are going to move forward with that, and KJ did express interest and met with Dr. Jones and Mr. Sagerman as well. Ultimately, we were able to find Haley to fulfill that role, so KJ tendered his resignation.
Because that's the woods, right?
Yeah, yeah, construction.
He's certified social studies.
Yes, yeah, so he's out of.
Kind of filled in, he was.
Yeah, he's out of endorsed, he's out of endorsed area, and I think the email that I'd sent out to staff was really thanking KJ for his patience and understanding as we worked through this process. I think for SDS specifically, it's a really, it's a really skill-specific and knowledge-based position, so you have to be highly skilled in that area. And we were fortunate that we found Haley, Haley, who's a graduate, I do not know her maiden name, but is a graduate of Norris School District, and is really.
Oh, is he legal?
Is, yeah, is very thrilled to come back here.
So we obviously didn't have a spot for Downey. Not that I'm lobbying for that, I'm just saying, I know that the kids loved him, so.
Yeah, yeah, currently we do not, but KJ has that opportunity to, if a position opens up that he could fulfill, he could certainly express interest and go through that process with Mr. Sagerman, or any other principal.
Are you saying your social studies?
Social studies, yeah. And then the only thing I would add on that personnel piece, and we've talked a lot about our, our counseling department, we've talked a lot about the supports and services. While yes, Jill Rice is, is Matt's wife and they're in district, what stood her out most from the applicants we had is she's actually a licensed LMHP. L M H P. So we now have a certified mental health individual on staff under a Norris contract, which she is both a counseling, a master's in counseling and a master's in school counseling. So she is a licensed LMHP. So, yeah.
And this is the second prude here.
Yes, yes.
I'll make the motion.
You make the motion.
I'll sure make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yep.
Rhonda, how do you feel?
Yes.
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 Yes, Gary?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, the last thing, superintendent goals. I gave you a handout to take a look at. So again, going back to November, superintendent evaluation. We, you guys received the results, met with Jim, and from the results of the superintendent evaluation, goals were created, and each month I'm gonna go through and give an update on those four goals. So I'll just kind of give a high-level overview and see if anybody has any questions on them. So that first goal, maintain transparent and open communication with all stakeholders, to foster cohesive school environment grounded in professionalism, trust, and mutual respect. So one, I really appreciate the work that people put into our district newsletter. I feel that continues to evolve with more and more pertinent information. But more importantly, our district sharing the story of the work that we're doing for both staff, students, and the community. The conversation continues, even though it's not a read-a-thon, to facilitate the communication with our Titan fundraising committee. Attended the January Hickman Area Chamber of Commerce meeting, and then just as we went through, discussed with Mr. Malloy the importance of transparency on our personnel and moving that to an action item. Two, primarily deals with long-term facility needs. Currently working with JEO, we've been going back and forth between JEO and DLR to get maps in a certain format for JEO to help them out. And then this Friday, we will be walking with JEO through all of our building sites and our structures. And then, continuing conversations with Northland regarding the communication plan for potential bond issue, and leaning on their expertise to better understand the pre-bond services. Three, promote a culture of safety and preparedness. We facilitated our third district safety committee meeting on Monday, January twentieth. A component of that meeting was a discussion focused on preparedness and our staff training. We're currently working on adding language to the EOP regarding building evacuation and remaining on campus. We did a lot prior with reunification off-campus. And then, building safety teams are bringing feedback to the fourth meeting regarding areas and topics they feel less prepared in regarding the overall safety and security. So be a good data point for the committee to discuss, and then once, we've also talked about onboarding a new school resource officer, and will be, we've already had one meeting with him, and he'll be coming in to just spend time at district office for a little while in the next couple of weeks.
Wait, Jordan?
Jordan is, did not put in for the next rotation.
I did know that.
Yes, so Deputy Dowhauer will be coming in. Long-term, long, he's been a career law enforcement. He actually was a school resource officer in North Platte for a number of years. He and his wife relocated to the area. He's been on the force for a few years, but put in, and I think Jordan maybe has some career aspirations. She loved it, but just didn't put in for the next three-year cycle, so.
When will we meet him?
April or May, as we transition.
I believe you said he has a daughter, daughter or son to attend the middle school.
Middle school. Dowhauer, I believe is how you say it.
And I'm pretty sure it's a daughter.
Daughter. Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, and then number four, ensure that administrator-certified staff, classified staff continue to receive evaluations appropriate aligned with their job descriptions and relevant instructional framework. Currently working with Mr. Malloy, Dr. Stein to develop job descriptions for coaching and sponsor positions, receiving a stipend. We do have a generic coaching job description, however, most of our positions. We do have a generic coaching job description, however, most of our positions are not generic. So we need to do a better job of having those descriptions on file. Continue to work with and support building administrators, complete their formal informal classroom walkthroughs with teachers. We actually had a really good conversation at our ATM meeting yesterday around a book. We're doing a book study and we talked a lot about that power of coaching. And how the administrative level from coaching really helps provide support for our teachers with the trickle-down effect with our students. I continue to meet with building principals quarterly, which is a formal process to review their goals for the school year. Formal evaluation will be completed in May or June, based on the feedback from our quarterly meetings. And then in conjunction with Chris, explore a new evaluation tool that aligns to the Marzano instructional framework. That will better meet the needs of staff and administration. Implementation of the tool will most likely happen next school year. And a vetting process is currently underway to understand what tools are out there, but what would be a good fit for us. So not only from the evaluation standpoint, but from a data gathering standpoint on where we're strong and what are our growth areas instructionally as a district. Questions on the update?
Will there be an opportunity for us to formally thank Jordan for her work here?
Yes, there will be, yep. Yeah, we'll make sure that she gets a some time to say goodbye if she wants at a at an upcoming board meeting. You know, she's done a great job for us.
Yeah, she has.
She's a good person.
Yeah, she is.
Other questions? All right.
You've been busy.
It's been a busy school year.
Yeah, we appreciate you giving us the update. Consent agenda. Consent items are considered routine will be passed without vote by unanimous consent. However, any board member can ask to remove an item from the consent list for separate action. Normally included in the consent items are agenda minutes, approval of claims, financial reports, and any personnel matters or other reports identified in the superintendent's report. The order of the agenda items may be rearranged according to board's preference. If anybody needs to.
The only thing I, yep, you signed that. The only.
I did sign this.
Yep.
Okay.
The only thing I was going to share was if you guys had any questions on the general fund monthly balance that I'd sent out. This is the first time in a while that as I shared, our revenue was down. And our end of the month, end of the month balance was below prior year. Now, from the revenue, lower amount of taxes came in this year than they did last year. But the balance itself, we, last year we received Esser dollars. This year, we do not. But also our state apportionment check hadn't came in, it had prior last year. And then looking into that state apportionment check, we'll get it this week sometime, but it's double what it was last year. So last year, I think we got about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and this year we get six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So I would expect our balance to go back to where it has been next month.
Is that how you, can you anticipate what the state apportionment money is? Can you explain what that is? Isn't that, isn't that the school lands?
I don't know if it's directly related to the school lands, but each year, the state puts a dollar amount on students, not foundation aid. And I don't know if it was three dollars and sixteen cents a kid. But basically, one time a year, they come back and each school gets an allotment. And I don't know specifically where that comes from. The email you get basically says this year, the state apportionment is based on X amount of dollars per student.
But you never know, though. You never know.
No, it's different every year.
I was thinking of something with school lands sold through the state or that.
Did you Google it?
Is that a board, that just gives the land to funds?
I don't know.
Well, school land funds, basically every child, wherever school this year, a child was, it hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Yeah, yeah, that might, and you can.
Hundred sixty-seven, that's true. And that's fixed, you're just like.
So that, so there shouldn't be.
It doesn't change, that doesn't change now.
So I just wondered, you know, why the highs and lows, you know?
And there's, and the school lands typically they'll, if they sell land, they're buying land too. But now with legislation, they're looking to possibly just expand the whole school lands. And what they would do is sell all that ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then what really could happen?
Private tax relief.
It'd probably be put into a fund. And where that fund goes is anybody's guess, okay?
Okay, you and I talked about this here, legislative thing.
Well, yeah, we talked about there, yeah. But there there is serious talk about that, and there are certain individuals that are very supportive of that. Because they think they can invest that money and make more money off of it than they can with the school. Then that the way it's set up now, and it would get rid of what I think nineteen people that are district, whatever supervisor, representatives, whatever. Would eliminate nineteen of those people. And that that could all be disbanded, it'd be all sold off. And of course, there's a lot of people wanting to buy that ground. I mean, the ground is valuable ground, I mean, it is. But, and a lot of it has moved out more west, a lot of it over here. No, no, it's just, it doesn't matter if it's a country school, it's just the land on where it's located. And so that, but they have sold land and they actually bought land that was more strategic place. So they have larger plots, but there's also still ground that exists at forty acres, hundred sixty, and so some smaller parcels, so. But they feel that they can sell that all off and invest that money and make more than elsewhere. Elsewhere. So where it goes, that it remains to be seen, but I'm sure there's a lot of people pulling for that money, you know, that are voting for it.
Yeah, build a track.
So.
On a track.
So Rhonda, here it is. Each Nebraska school district receives a share of the temporary school fund based on the twenty-twenty board can, or census of children ages five to eighteen who live in the district. So I I was off at two decimals. So state total census of three hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven resulted in apportionment factor of three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents per child.
Yeah, that's about twice of what they told us.
These funds should be reseeded in the general fund under thirty-four.
Thank you.
Yep.
I did have a couple of questions on the consent agenda, but you'll, you'll answer that.
Yep, I will get those answers when I get back to my email.
Yeah.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Titan fundraising committee update, we don't have.
I I will say that I did attend that meeting, the last that they had. Cory and Jennifer are working hard on it. I think, I think that, and I made the suggestion that that our future planning committee meeting needs to get together, needs to address. How do I say this? More support for the fundraising committee and how we can do that to support them because they are working hard. There's some things that haven't materialized like they'd like, and it's probably not moving, and I, this is my perception, it's not moving as fast as they'd like to see it. But I think there's some things that we can do to help spur that along and improve that growth. Still, still very enthusiastic, still, still just great, great thoughts, ideas, and always thinking and spending a lot, a lot of time on this, people, a lot of time, and so. But it's a good meeting.
Yep.
It's a good meeting.
Yep, it was. Next meeting's next Wednesday.
So what do we have that, and what's our deadline date or ending date?
I think originally, when everybody was talking, we were hoping to be done. It's gonna, it's it's continuing on. We did get some unfortunate news from Shields that they were not going to be our flagship donor partner. So the.
I don't know, it's not time to summarize any of that, but I think we definitely learned from this as a team, as a school district, as you guys running this school or any school program. It's just tough, it's tough. I mean, we got as professional and good a folks doing it as you can ever get, and if you get lucky or have more of a private school, that it, I think that's just the climate of how it is. You can ask quite a few other places, and it might be lucky to have somebody pony up to something, but it's tough. It's tougher than you think, so I think we just learn that as we, that's just my opinion. That's just my opinion, as we just learn from it. I'm not saying we don't work hard to finish strong, that's not my point. I think we learn from it, that's all I'm saying.
And and this is a learning process. You're right, Craig, totally. I think the thing is, though, that that they're definitely realizing is so much of this is relationship. And and how strong that relationship is. And let's face it, you know, some of this has been addressed for the first time. And the thing is, is, but you always keep looking for more, new ones, you know, there's, what else is out there? You know, are we reaching far enough? Are we doing a lot? And I think that's where we, as we get together as a committee, that hopefully we can come up with some of those ideas and some of that support. And demonstrate that, you know, that they are, they are on the front line. There is what, three committee members there, right? That night.
Three, yep.
And which is a long ways from the size of it when it started.
Yep.
And so I just, I just think we need to provide that support because, you know, we're all behind it and we, and one of the reasons I went to the meeting, just to sit there and show our support as a board, that we're, we're totally behind them and spend that time with them, and it was good. It was good, but definitely the right people, though, Craig.
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely the right people. That, that's one thing that was definitely done right in this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, no, and the future planning committee, I think we have a meeting on the books next week, right?
I think you're right.
I haven't looked that far ahead, but I know we have one on the books.
And I think with your comment about, you know, completion date, I think we need to set that.
I would agree.
And I think that's, that's a very good point and an item that needs to be discussed.
Yep. Yeah, because that's something, if we don't set a date or a target, it's gonna continue to go on.
I was just thinking that in respect to Janet Cora.
Yes, it is, and that's the thing, yeah, we, you know, we don't want to go on for another year and have a, you meeting every two weeks. Having these meetings and, you know, going through this all, it's just.
Yep.
So.
Okay, yep.
Nope.
No. Hey, eleven policies?
Yes, it's pretty straightforward tonight. I did include Justin Knight's memo on combining policy or series eight thousand and nine thousand. So two motions tonight that I'm recommending. One is to combine the eight thousand and nine thousand series into the newly created seven thousand series. And this goes along with our efforts to try and make sure that our policy is streamlined, that we were not, we don't have duplicates of policies. That we're shorting out those things, and I had met with Steph and Rhonda to go over all of these pieces too, and they'd asked some really good questions that I will address. In terms of combining, Justin had stated that that does not require a first and second reading. We can just have an action to combine those tonight. And then there is a second motion to rescind some policies that are outdated and no longer needed. And those are policies eighty-one hundred, eighty-three fifty, nine thousand and ninety-one hundred.
I make a motion to combine, combine the eight thousand, nine thousand series into the newly created seven thousand series. Which for some long reason we never had. Second.
Motion to second, further discussion? A vote yes?
Gary?
Yes.
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 Motion passes?
The second one is to rescind those policies that per Justin are outdated and no longer needed.
I'll make a motion to approve the rescinding of policies eighty-one hundred, eighty-three fifty, nine thousand, and ninety-one hundred. Second.
Second, further discussion?
Yes, Craig?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Presentation of the twenty-three, twenty-four annual report. This is good stuff.
Yeah, so this is, this is done. I I really, I greatly appreciate Dr. Joel and just, this is Morrison and Dr. Bolinger, as well as everyone else that contributed to this. ESU Six Production Center, they they helped in putting this into the format that it is, which is similar to the one in years past. It's, it's always a little bit odd because it's a twenty-three, twenty-four annual report. But it does include some information from this current school year because it, it just didn't make sense to have something like this out there. But then have, for example, our old mission and vision statement, things like that. So those pieces are included. And there's some new adds to it this year that I had highlighted last month, just that I think is important under financial data. On, on page seven, you see that the cost per pupil by average daily membership. As you can see from the Eastern Midlands Conference where Norris ranks, I think that that is, in my opinion, I know all of you agree. We, we offer an exceptional education to students here, and I think that we do it at a very fiscally, very fiscally responsible. So you can see where we rank there per people spending. It's always good to have the mill levy comparison in there to see, you know, what, based on your home values, your taxes paid. Last year too, that's, that's good to see. And then there's also towards the back. Instead of including the short cycle improvement plan in there. We did include that in the fall, the board approved the new strategic plan, and those goals are included in this report as well. These are just, we have not received the official copies yet from ESU Six. They've printed some that will be able to distribute to you all and to have for people to take. But this is just a printing copy.
You know, since you put this in there and with the comparison, I thought it was interesting, cost per student. That would represent a high ease of where they are at as far as cost per student.
Yeah, cool. And and one thing, Gary, to note, and it's down there below that, but, so this is based off of the average daily membership from twenty-two, twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
So, so that, it will change because the, the twenty-three, twenty-four, that is, that is typically slow to catch up. So the twenty-three, twenty-four cost per pupil is not available currently. So that, and that's a great catch, actually. That's something that next year at this time, this will probably look much different.
Okay, okay, so. All right, that explains it. I guess that up there.
Yeah.
So once those copies come in, we'll get you a legitimate copy, but it's kind of come to complete, but we wanted to get you a copy in your hands for tonight.
One of the things I don't think we ever can force enough is looking at this and seeing the academic performance from undergrads, ACT scores. And I know that has a lot to do with people right here, our dedicated teachers, administrators, and just really, really appreciate what goes into all that, and good job.
Nope, I'd echo that. It's, we have a lot of great people in our district. They do a lot of great things.
Absolutely. Anything else on the board? Dana Cole, company auditor presentation?
Yeah, the main event. The main event. So really quick, Ryan, I'll do a quick introduction. So just like through the course of time, every year. Well, we get our audit, we look through, and we're fortunate, Kim, Linda, Jessie. But Kim really does a lot with, with our budget and in the work that we do, and we're very fortunate to have a a great front office staff. So when we get that, you know, we're confident that we're compliant, our numbers are strong. And so we've always kind of focused on the areas of non-compliance and make sure that we're filling whatever we have there. I don't know the last time we've actually brought in our auditor to kind of talk about the process and allow the Board of Education a little bit more insight. Because we haven't historically taken a lot of time. So we have invited Ryan to come in and shed his expertise. Now, the crazy thing about Ryan, when we spoke on the phone the other day, is I said, you know, here's kind of what I'm thinking, and.
here's kind of what I'm thinking and he said, no, this is, this is not uncommon for me to come talk. So I was like, sigh of relief, like this isn't some new territory for Ryan to come talk to a board of education. So without further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Well, thank you. Um, you guys will have to, I guess, steer me in the direction you want me to go because I can spend as much time on this as you want to. But I also want everybody to get out of here at a decent time too. So I'll, I'll, I'll keep this short and sweet. So, I don't know if everybody has copies of it in front of them or you just want me to just talk generally speaking. Okay. So that report is about sixty-two pages long. Okay. And so really what happens is, is Kim sends us preliminary information. Okay. We go ahead and we, we, we do all our preliminary analytical stuff. And then we send out confirmations. Okay. So there's, there's really a couple of different independent third-party verification steps that we go through. Okay. I should, I should point out right off the top that these statements, along with ninety-nine percent of every area in Nebraska's school district is reported on a cash basis. Okay. So what's that? That means as the district receives cash, it's revenue at that point in time. As checks are written, that's an expenditure. Okay. So that makes our life in the accounting world a little bit simpler because we're really just dealing with, we'll just say the, the checkbook, if you will, for each individual fund. Okay. So we send out bank confirmations. Okay. What was the bank balance as of August thirty-first, twenty-four? Those, Dr. Joel signs them, sends off to the bank, the, the bank sends them directly back to us. Okay. So there's no, well, it's just a mitigation of fraud step there. Same thing we do with the county treasurers. Okay. We, we send out confirmations to, I think, the three, three counties that collect and remit taxes to the district. And we're able to verify, um, like basically a hundred percent of what those tax collections are. So as we look at, um, we'll say like the balance sheet and the, the income statement of the district, well, we know what the cash is because we, we reconciled it and we've confirmed it. Okay. We switch over to the income part of it and well, we, we've knocked out the state aid, we've knocked out the federal money and we've knocked out the tax collections. Again, that's about ninety-five percent of the money that comes into the district. Okay. So then, so then what we do is we say, okay, well, where's the underlying risk at? Well, it's in the dispersments. Let's make sure that what's going out the door is actually valid and can be verified. So, um, we go through these calculations and basically that tells us X number of dispersments have to be documented or tested, if you will. And so, um, we, we generate that list, just a, a random sample of, of the population of dispersments. Say, Kim, here's all the checks that were written throughout the year that we want to see. She gives us that documentation. And we say, okay, well, based on our confidence level, based on the sample that was selected, then we, we can basically form our opinion on the statements. Now, we also do some payroll testing too. Now, that's probably, I'll say like a typically a half dozen, six, ten employees, something like that. We, we get their contract. We say, okay, this person was slated to make this much throughout the year. We go get their payroll register and make sure that that's okay. All right. So that's kind of procedurally what we do. And then at that point in time, um, we get our adjustments posted. Typically there, there's, there's not a lot of, it's more reclassification type journal entries that we would submit to schools, propose to schools. A lot of times what we would see is governmental auditing standards would say that even though the cash is sitting with Lancaster County Treasurer or Gage County, you know, wherever and it hasn't been remitted to the school yet, that's actually an asset of the, of the school. So, you know, Kim might not book that and that's just, that's just a timing thing. So we would reflect that as basically cash on hand or, um, cash at the county treasurer is actually what we call it. And then that next month when the check comes in, it all, it all kind of washes out. Maybe some, uh, increased retirement reclassifications, but typically that's, that's about anything that we would run into related to adjustments. Again, that doesn't affect really the, the cash, the cash balance that the district has. So, um, that's kind of what we do. Now, I, I, I'll go on. Stop me if rambling, but, um, since the district receives more than, or expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money. Okay. We are required to do some additional testing. Okay. So typically there's, there's two programs, well, and I'm, I'm putting ESRS aside, but, um, typically there's, there's two programs that, um, we, we really look at on the federal money side and it's, it's, uh, Title I money and it's IDEA money. Okay. So we can see what the federal government sent. So then what we do is we go look at the expenditures that were coded to those six thousand, the, the federal expenditure programs, and we test them. Generally speaking, it's, it's, it's pretty easy because the bulk of that, that money that's spent is payroll related. So then we catch that on the, on the payroll side. Okay. The ESRS money that that's been trickling through the last few years, that's fairly easy to, to trace too because typically that's a large dollar expenditures that we can ask for an individual invoice and boom, there it is. So that's kind of what we do as it relates to the federal, the federal programs. I'm not sure if it's going to matter much. I don't, I guess I don't know what the total federal expenditures were last year, but you know, I mentioned it was seven hundred and fifty thousand was the threshold. Now that's up to a million. Okay. So, um, we, so you, we were at, we were at one point six last year. So I would anticipate at the same lot, you know, requirements still being in place for the foreseeable future. Also in these statements, there are, um, towards the back, there are by fund budgetary comparison statements. And so what we do with those is we have the income expenditures and then there's a column right next to it of what the budgeted revenue expenditures were, general fund, building fund, you know. And, um, we can go access what, um, the state has as far as a, a budget document on file. Okay. And then we compare that to what the actual expenditures were for each fund. If there was a fund that was overspent, um, we just note it as, as a finding in the back. And, um, again, that, that's a very common thing. And I, and I, and I, I think, actually I think there's three findings. And all three of those are very common. Okay. So, um, I'll just touch on those three real quick. So the first one basically talks about, financial statement preparation. So governmental or just auditing standards in general would say, well, okay, um, Ryan, you guys, you and your team show up to audit the school. Kim says, here's the financial statements. We do our thing and we put that one or two page letter on top. Okay. In reality, that, that was, that's not what happens. Kim sends us a, a trial balance for each fund. We take those numbers and put them in a, uh, form of financial statement. Okay. Happens every, every school district that we work with. Okay. And, and I don't know why there's that expectation that the districts can prepare these footnotes included, reset of financial statements. So that's just kind of a, it's a required finding. The, the second one, again, to no fault of the district, um, lack of segregation of duties. And that's merely a function of the number of personnel that are involved specifically in the accounting function. And like I told Dr. Joel, I mean, if you wanted to have ten, ten extra people in the accounting department to make sure every checks and balance was in place, uh, to rid, um, us reporting on that finding, then that's what it would take. Uh, not cost effective. Okay. So, um, that.
I've always wanted to know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I've always wondered that too. We've always talked about that.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a very, very hard hurdle for, for districts to overcome. And then the, the third most common one is, is it never fails, some fund was overspent, the budgeted, okay, without, without being, I guess amended and published and, and all that stuff. So those are the three that we typically run into. Of course, while we're here doing our, doing our procedures, if we come across things as far as recommendations, we always forward them to, to Kim or the superintendent or whoever that is, you know, we don't really put those in, in a, we don't memorialize those in, in, in terms of an actual formal letter. We just, you know, hey, you might want to think about this type thing. But I mean, as far as, um, your district, I, I think that, um, every internal control procedure that's in place is in fact, is effective. It's designed properly. And it, it also helps the fact that these are cash basis statements. And so it's, you know, it's really just what's in, what's in the bank account at the end of the year. So. Anybody have any questions?
I was just wondering, do you have the same team come back to do Norris pretty much every year or is it different people every year?
Uh, no. So ideally it's the same team. Yeah. Yes. So that, that's kind of, I would say, you know, um, given the fact that, that I think we're not unique in the sense of struggling with turnover and, 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 um, finding good employees, typically we would say that most efficiency, um, to be gained would be having repeat accounts come out. And so, um, yeah, I'm the partner in charge on, on this and I don't know, it's probably been, Angie Vertisca, I don't know if maybe you, maybe you know her. Okay. So, so Angie and I started the, the firm twenty-one years ago and then she left maybe five years ago and then that's when I took over for us. Okay. We, I guess me personally, um, deal with, well, I guess as a firm, we probably do ninety-some school districts out of the three hundred or something like that. So, um, we do everything from the size of Elkhorn to Lewiston. Okay. So we, we, we kind of see it all. Okay. I would say, uh, what, what the teams that we create, um, we kind of will, will send a team and say, okay, you're Northeast Nebraska. So they'll do all those. And then Central, you know, Lincoln area and Southeast Nebraska. So that's, that's kind of where, where I ended up, I guess, how I showed up. But yeah. Ideally, so Casey McNeely, I don't know if you, if you know her, um, she's, um, CPA, been with us for years. She's the one that actually, she's my, we'll say manager on this. So then, she does a lot of the planning, that analytical stuff. Um, and then she, um, basically reports to me. And then, um, I do my review and then I get to come talk to you all. So.
So yeah, good. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You guys are fine. Yep. Yeah. I mean,
That's good.
It's, it's, it's nice working with a district that, that actually does have the personnel and I'll say dedicated personnel, at least what, what we work with. Um, because there are some districts that, you know, the bookkeeper might also be the lunch lady. She might be the wrestling coach. She might, you know. You don't really know. So Kim does a very good job, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
And I guess that's, that's definitely a concern, you know, we've got Cam, okay. And she does a good job, but you know, but if Kim's not here, right? You know, and you know that, you know, that we sat here to say, well, wow, now we gotta figure this out, you know, and, I know that that's been addressed before. If we were prior superintendents and, you know, and it's definitely a concern, but things have been put in place, which I appreciate as a board member after hearing your report that, uh, hey, some things are being done to address that issue.
I think you guys are controlling what you can control, you know. And then it's, it's really just a matter of us getting, um, that in, information and then us to do our, our procedures on, on that. And typically like, you know, I go back to if we have four journal entries, common, if we have forty, then we might have to have a discussion about, you know, maybe things aren't quite going the way that they should be throughout the year. But, but I'm not, I'm not suggesting that at all right now.
Well, that's all for Cam.
Yeah, no, I, I, I go back to what I shared with the guys when we looked at the audit report in January or I think it was January feels a long time ago. Uh, this year was the fir-, was the lowest number of journal entries to date for, for Kim and, and Ryan to talk through. So I think the recommendations that have happened over the years as, as Kim has been in that role, I, I really see there's been improvements to the understanding of the expectation and what needs to be done. Kim does a really fantastic job.
Great.
Thank you.
I left my coat tied at home just in case I end up in some ditch.
Drive safe.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, item fourteen, discuss, consider and take all necessary action with regard to approving the architect, architect agreement of JEO Consulting Grouping for site facilities evaluation project.
Yes. So dating back to our meetings with Derek Aldridge, to seeking RFP proposals, to interviews, to selection, JEO has been working, um, with the understanding that we just needed to work out the contract language. And so seeking approval tonight to make it official with the contract with JEO. A couple of things to note, we had several meetings Zoom between Derek, Sean, Corey, myself, Ryan from JEO, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. So the way this irons out is we did have them put in their hourly rates for the individuals that would be a part of the process. We did put a do not exceed limit of twenty thousand dollars on this with the idea then, as we get further down the road, because again, we use the word potential future bond issue, then when, when we get to another tier of support that and work we may need with them, that we would re-enter the conversation of what that looks like and sounds like. So this gets us started and, and a ways down the road, but there will be a time that we need to come back and, and have a similar conversation, but a difference to the word.
Move to approve the architect agreement between Norris and JEO Consulting Group. As architect for our site and facilities, uh, evaluation project.
I second that.
Motion second, discretion?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Sorry, damn it, wasn't right. I'm sorry for the swear also.
Yes.
Vote yes, motion passes.
Don't put that in minutes or.
Can we put that in the minutes? Okay. So this is a follow-up. This is a follow-up from when Tobin was here, um, that presented kind of the, uh, process that they use as the municipal advisor. While they currently are municipal advisor, again, going down that road of, we'll call them pre-bond services, looking for a formal acknowledgement for them. Um, their base fee is five thousand dollars. But then there are also the ones at the end that they talked about, the, the fee really comes at the end if a bond is passed, um, the amount, the percent, all of that, um, is what Tobin has talked through on that. So tonight we're just asking to add another partner to our journey down to a potential bond issue.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Further discussion?
I don't think we could select a better.
No.
I don't think there's an option. I've got a better.
Rhonda?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. So five step negotiating agreement.
Yes. So again, kudos to our negotiations committee. Uh, they've done a lot of work, had a lot of meetings, had a lot of conversations. They've been with us since three-thirty today. Had a great meeting with, uh, transportation, a few bus drivers and, and Jan. And we're really close to doing the whole, whole process. But tonight, uh, we are. But tonight, uh, we are asking for the formal approval for the certified staff negotiated agreement. Now, if you open that quick, Dr. Bollinger, Mr. Bollinger did an excellent job of going through and highlighting the changes that were made, whether it be numbers or language. But ultimately we are looking at $800 added to the base. That brings our base salary to $40,900. We also have looked at some additional language for leave. And so our donated leave can now come from unspecified and/or accumulated sick leave. The top one there is increase the number or the dollar amount for individuals that go over the 400 hours in their sick bay to equal a $100 per eight hours, which is one day. So that number was increased through negotiations. And a couple of changes to the extra duty. I know we increased the percentage for color guard. We added middle school speech. And we changed, was it the academic?
We added quiz.
We added quiz bowl. And added slam poetry. And as I shared, we increased the percent to color guard. And then the last one, we were, from a compensation standpoint for our pre-K SLP and our home-based pre-K special education teacher, they do a lot of home visits outside of the contract time. They were being compensated, so this is an addition. But to help with the, um, payment, we added the extended days at their per diem instead of retroactively giving them payment for when that is. The way that those extended days work, they keep a log, but it's already prorated in their paycheck. So. Clean way to do it.
Sounds like a simplified way.
It very much is. And that's, that's it. So just seeking approval tonight. But again, a great relationship with NAE, but that happens because we have great people and our representation from the board. They do a wonderful job, Jim, Gary and Rhonda. So kudos to you guys.
Yeah, I would just also emphasize too, but the, any, any representatives, they did a great job. It was very open collaborative environment. We got a lot accomplished. I think we really focused in on the things that made the biggest difference to the greatest number of teachers.
Good job, guys. Thanks for all the time on that.
So I'd recommend that we approve of the negotiated agreement and salary schedule for the 25.6 school year from the board negotiations committee recommendations as approved by members of the NAE Norris Association of Educators, exclusive bargain, collective bargaining. Second? Second, discussion?
Yes.
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 Red Rover, Red Rover.
It's a really odd name, I know.
Seems like they must all have odd names.
Yeah. So, you know, one of the things that has come up this year as with me being new, well, I don't know if I'm new to the district anymore, newer to the district, is really just trying to take a look at some of the systems that we have in place that helps simplify our processes, especially for those that are mostly impacted, Jesse, Kim and Linda. And so in, in working through that, we currently utilize Frontline. And Frontline is a, a program that we use for recruiting and hiring teachers when you go to apply for a, for a position, as well as when you enter your absences to be gone, you have to go through Frontline. We also utilize TMS, which is Time Management System for clocking in and out, primarily for classified staff. And what we are finding is those two tools specifically are pretty outdated. They're not very user friendly. It takes a lot of effort to make any changes and it's still resulting. And since they don't meet our needs, there is a lot of paper, a, a pretty substantial paper trail, meaning like you can't put everything on Frontline or TMS. So what that results in is like there's a new system created where there's this little slip of paper you have to fill out in this instance. It is then sent to the district office, which is then manually calculated and filed away. And so there's just, it's not a, a good use of anyone's time. And so we spent some time going through this, this process with Noel, Brian and Jason Gault. They, they were pretty important in this as well as, and I included everyone in the rationale here. There was representation, all three ladies here participated, as well as representation from each building. And Red Rover was really the, the overwhelming favorite. So very easy to use. It offers a lot of pieces that we currently don't have. So essentially we are going to be able to go from using two separate tools to using Red Rover for absence management, time management and recruiting and hiring staff members. Very easy, very simple. And actually Noel, I would give him a lot of credit. And I don't think Noel takes a lot of pride in his ability to talk people down. And so, so the total price that we currently pay for Frontline and TMS, which are far, they're outdated tools, is a little over $17,000 a year. Noel was able to talk Red Rover down to $18,100 a year. So we are going to be paying just under $1,000 more a year for tools that are, everyone is going to be much more excited about. And Jesse, Kim, Linda are excited about it. And we are going to go through the implementation timeline. And then once that happens, then we'll start to share things out with staff on what, how you're going to enter an absentee or clock in, those types of things. But one of the things that it is, and Red Rover's been very willing to work with us on splitting the to, because there is an implementation fee, but it's fairly low. They're going to let us split it over multiple budget years. So it's not an impact, all of an impact right now. But starting with September 1, 2025, or sorry, September 1, 2026, it will be $18,100 flat a year going through. For a way better product. Yeah. So just again, to be fully transparent throughout all of this. So our tools that we're currently using, Frontline and TMS, those contracts go through the summer. So those we have, we were already paying for those and we're obligated to pay for those through the summer. If you look at the rationale there, the, essentially that $18,100, they've split that initial into two separate. So we'll have 5,300 that's due after, after you approve it. We'll also have a $7,500 one-time investment with the software and all of that. And then the second half of the payment will be in September. So I want to be fully transparent in, in that. That is, oh, 13,000 that we will be paying this budget year for this tool to get it go.
So we'll fully overlap.
We'll be overlapping, we'll be overlapping a little bit. And there's just, there's really no way around it. If we waited until the contracts ran out, there's no way we'd be able to implement it next year.
Return Noel's, he can maybe renegotiate.
I, I, I think it would be, I think it would be okay. I think initially it came back, it was, it was north of 25,000 a year. And Noel was able to will it down to 18,100.
That's amazing.
And so a lot of that has to do with Noel's ability, but also as we always, we all speak so highly of Norris School District. It's a pretty sought-after school district. So Red Rover was very motivated to work with us because they want us to be using their tools and platforms. So.
Do they have automatic updates as it goes along? I mean, year after year?
Yes. So no, yes, so this is there, so it will, the software updates everything. It auto-renews with it. It is, it is a, there's a service agreement that is included in that as well. I think and Rhonda, you'll know this too from subbing that, I mean, basically anything that you do as a substitute teacher of the district, you'll now be able, if you choose, to do completely through your phone to where there's a very, a free, easy app to be able to accept sub jobs. Teachers are going to be able to put up lesson plans and all these different things through Red Rover that are really easy to navigate. And all the balances, it is, it's just going to streamline a lot of what we do. And Jesse has really taken a, a leadership role in it in that she's very excited to help with the implementation and wants to be really involved in it too. So they're all doing a really great job. I gotta use Linda, Jesse and, and Kim as my barometer check as we go through a whole many new things. And so there was individual conversations with each of them. And they were, they, they all are all.
That sounds good. I, I was just wondering if there's a lifespan to this kind of technology? Or can they update it?
That, I don't know, but it's a newer company. So they really market theirs, themselves on, you have a lot of established companies that have been, that have been bought, sold, everything. Then things just kind of, they fall into stagnation and they just stay the same. Where this company is really trying to adapt. In fact, working with Mrs. Morrison on our evaluation system, the tool we use to evaluate teachers is really outdated too. And Red Rover is currently developing a product for that. So since they're a newer company, they're very well respected. I think that for the time being, they are really going to be able to adapt to what our needs are and be able to tailor it to what needs. Much easier than other companies were able to.
So you motion that anyway?
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Discussion?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Legislative updates?
Yeah. Just a few quick updates. I know Gary might have some. He's on the cutting edge of the legislative committee as well. But we did meet with Senator Dorn on Monday. And so this was from Monday, so things have changed. But he had shared 10 bills were on final reading. None of them were Senator priority bills. We expect them to come soon. We talked a lot about TOSA. And, uh, just the budget deficit and what they're trying to do with, uh, different ideas. But ultimately we pushed fairly hard on him to better understand the budget deficit and what they're looking at doing so that we don't find ourselves in this position year in and year out and all of that. Didn't get a lot from them other than they, they want to go after newly created things. So why we talked TOSA and different things is he brought up the special education and how it went from 40-ish, 60 at the top to 80% fully funded. He said, there's been comments about, why are we paying 80%? And we had a very long discussion on how helpful that is for schools. And that was something that just recently was brought to the table. So why are we even talking about peeling any of that back? So there were just some really good questions that, again, too early to tell. But he still seemed hesitant when we talked to him about the, the like sales tax exemptions and different things. He didn't share a whole lot with that, but doesn't, doesn't know if, if that will go anywhere this year. But again, we brought up, if we're talking about budget deficit, the state can find a way to, to make additional revenue so that we don't have to do this over and over. So budget has to be introduced by day 70, which is sometime in May. Senator Dorn believes that will come to the floor debate with $0 based on where that budget is at. So anything with a fiscal note, um, high likely probability that it's not going to go through. Then we inserted LB 303. A lot of schools are on board with, for the first time I can remember, a, a funding mechanism to lower the, the levy, increase student foundation aid to 1590. That comes with a fiscal note. So we talked about how is it that we can finally get along and come to maybe some consensus on school funding? But it's not going to go through because there's no money. And, and again, he, he gets that. But at the same time, he, uh, he also knows that they're in a budget crunch. So, and he said that's roughly a $60 million increase to the state budget for LB 303. Mervyn's bills on the Ten Commandments and religion hasn't had much discussion, but he doesn't think that will get out of. Gary, Sean, you guys have anything else to add? That was just a quick overview.
The only thing I had is that we had the legislative, uh, meeting here. And Stephanie got to sit with Senator Dorn and I sat with Senator Brandt. And there was other school districts, they had this big table and stuff. And that was one of the questions about, you know, what about this deficit of 432 million? And the response was, don't worry about that. Don't worry about that. It's just, how can you not worry about 432 million? Don't worry about it. It'll be taken care of. So, so I don't, I, you know, from what you got and from what I got, wasn't much. You know, about what's going to be done with it. But the one thing I did see the other day that Colorado is facing a $750 million deficit. So they're in a lot worse shape than what we are. I'm not saying that's good for us, but it just shows that there are other states with this similar problem. The whole, the whole legislative process is, is, is hard to figure out when you have that amount of deficit and then you're introducing bills that are requiring fiscal expenditures. I just, it, it, I, I just, and I have not been able to grasp, you know, we, we talk about, yeah, we talk about all the bills, but anytime there's anything, any money attached to it, it's kind of like, boy, yeah, but what about that? You know, and, uh, you know, where's it going to come from? So, um, now I have not heard about the special, uh, special education funding. Oh, there's been discussion on that. I have not heard much on that. So that, that's a surprise to me. One thing that.
Yeah. And he brought, he brought that up when we were pushing him on the deficit. The other thing he talked about was the, uh, Future Education Fund and how the initial investment into that, it's not going to go too many years until that runs out. So he's, he's, he was coming up loud and clear that there's just, there's a deficit and the funds that exist, funds that exist in funds are running out because there's no replenishment. So.
You know, at one time Senator Brandt was talking about sales tax exemptions and stuff like that. Did he mention that when you spoke?
Oh, that's, that, they, they all talk about that, but you know, fuck cigarettes, it can't be, you know? It takes a lot of money to make up 432 million dollars and that's not going to be a big, big deal.
Brave is in a big favor, is in favor of reducing the number of sales tax exemptions. He's also in favor of the income tax and pausing that where it's at and taking that money and putting it back into.
Those are the parts they can dip into. There's some sales tax exempt things. They're all obvious and certain driving forces are the obvious reason of why they're even there. And that's going to take a bit to get around. But that's definitely, they're looking in the right spot to figure out how to do it.
But what's interesting is that they're talking about, some, some are talking about uh, taking sales tax off energy, electric. So that makes sense because that's taking more sales tax dollars out. So, you know, I don't, I'm having a hard time grasping, you know? And you've got a diverse group that you're dealing with, of course. And they all have their personal agendas, so, so it's difficult, so.
Well, this tape one is that, for instance, and I only know because we're in that world. So they're just sales tax exempt for like, over like, say, tree carrier, Warner. So heavy highway use tax, some of their stuff, that's all, that's all sales tax exempt. You got companies out there beating the roads up, making healthy. They're all tax exempt. So that's just one example that I know of. So if you look down through them, I, I hate to guess how many, that that's all lobby driven because those families have done a lot for the communities and the state and so on and so forth. That's complex. But just take that one alone and figure out how much might that put back into the tail.
And you're right. There's so many of those that we don't even.
That's what I mean, the sales.
We're the national leader.
The sales tax exempt situation is a problem in Nebraska. That is 100% where to look, but the things they're telling you about, to think about, that's not even the root of where it's at. Not even close.
But that's what they bring up.
Well, that's, that's.
Cause there's not constituents.
Exactly right.
Who are you gonna upset?
Yeah. Because you're not gonna go to the Ackley family and bring up that part or somebody's, some lobbyists might disappear.
That's the way it works.
Yeah.
That's just awesome.
Yeah. But that's where the money's sitting at that should be reevaluated all of it.
I think the last, and Dr. Dill spoke on it really well, but just the whole LB three oh three. I, I think in talking to Senator Dorn, basically stating that anything brought to the table that involves money is off the table, except for LB three oh three, which is that sixty million dollars that according to Senator Dorn, Governor Pillen is very for it and wants to make it work. So there's lots of ideas out there, things that aren't going to be brought up this year because of the deficit. But then it sounds like they're going to try some way to push through three oh three. But I just don't know what that's going to look like, but.
The article in the paper today was very much in that vein.
Yeah.
That he supported it so much and everybody else did too.
Yeah. GNSA and STANS and all of that.
Right.
Has a support. I don't remember the last time all of those groups could come together on this single bill.
Yeah. And even NSEA.
Yeah.
To the lawyers quotes and said, this is the best thing we've ever seen.
Yep. So I feel like he probably feels like this is the time to make it work, but there's just no money. So I don't know about.
Well, and then, and then they go after some things like, you know, the teachers' retirement fund. And, you know, their contribution of the two percent.
Yeah.
They wanna cut that down, but donate to that, which is a well-funded, well-run uh, uh, group. And they've done a fabulous job with it. And yet they're talking about taking that away.
Yeah.
So, and then monitoring that from year to year, which, you know, we all know where that'll go.
Yep.
So that, you know, some of these things that, you know, I know they're grasping and they're looking at these things. And, you know, if you can pick up thirty, forty million dollars here or there, uh, you know, that'll, that'll make a niche in the deficit, but, but if somebody's over here spending it before you even have it.
Correct.
You know? I, I don't know. It, it's, it's a difficult thing, so.
Pretty much so.
Do you, did he say when is that forecasting board meeting? Since the end of this month, right?
Yeah. So it's right, it's right before we schedule our next meeting with him. So we're, end of February.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause that, that'll change then, maybe?
Yeah. And, and the way he talks, it'll be, it'll be positive, but not.
Not enough.
Not enough.
Yeah, that's what.
So we have our next meeting is March third, somewhere around there. Yeah, I think it's right at the end of February. I'm just glad your iPad's working.
Yeah, exactly. I use my, oh yeah. Cause I'm afraid of doing that and spark on the, I'd school iPad.
We'll keep you up to date with the emails and everything we get.
Yeah, it's nice to have those.
Thank you.
Any USB updates?
Uh, nope. The only thing is if you saw a date in there, I'll get Rhonda signed up for the, the Crete, the, the Crete finance one. And you can let me know after the meeting or shoot me an email if there's something you want me to get you signed up for.
Our membership guide?
Oh, yes. And you got your new membership guide. Memorize that maybe.
I was gonna say, I bet Craig will be able to.
Next month, there will be an assessment.
Don't bother him.
I think Castro County District Development update.
Yeah, the only thing I'll share with you, um, and I know we've shared it, there is a public hearing on February tenth at six thirty at the Roca Community Center to, at a request of Thomas Shea to rezone two point two three acres of property at fifteen seven oh five East Street, Roca, Nebraska. Um, and take that from ag to residential in hopes that when they sell that, somebody is willing to make the purchase, but purchasing it for residential purposes, so. It was a good conversation with Lisa down at Roca, but I said we have no issues with that, so.
Well, that would stop our taxes.
Yeah.
No bill taxes.
Yeah.
Our taxes. How about our buses? Have we heard any more of those so far?
I think about them all the time.
They disappeared. It's on my list.
What?
I'm just kidding.
I had a student ask about those buses.
Just like the lobbyists, they disappeared.
Yeah.
It's on, it's on my list here for ready to go.
Too many questions about those buses.
I'm just amazed how they can wanna go get part of the market share selling buses of any kind to school districts and be six, eight, however, I don't like that.
Yeah.
Well, Freightliners winning the race on getting more market share over Cornhusker when it comes to doing stuff like this.
It, are we ready for, are we ready for that item? Yeah. Yeah, uh, yeah, so I, no, no. I was gonna say, it's on my list. So right now we have one bus is near completion. They're waiting on one more part for the air conditioning unit that was being installed. And then the other bus, the air conditioning unit is in the process of being installed. I don't know what that entails, but apparently in talking to Jan, they said that we need to be ready to have, to tell them where to take the buses to have them. So Stein and Jan are working on that. And talking to Jan, as confident as she can probably be, she anticipates here, beginning of March, we're going to take delivery of at least one of them.
So bad.
As long as.
Now, but it was awesome.
It's tied up under tariffs.
But they also. But credit to Jan, she spends a lot of time on the phone with them as well. And they were supposed to be here in September, then October, then December, then January. But the last update was they are nearing completion and are going to be, we need to get a plan in place for what company we are going to use to rent them. So Dr. Stein and Jan are going to make sure that that is ready to go.
Well, also how they're gonna be wrapped and everything yet, because, yeah, you wanna have that done and do it right away and not wait.
Yeah.
Not wait to have to refinish them or whatever.
Yeah. So there's.
Whatever.
And I know that there's been a lot, and I know Jan has been pressuring them too, because I can't remember when in March. But I know Wes is taking students down to Branson. There's a lot of them going down there, so they will be used. And so we are hopeful that that is gonna be the case. Uh, the other thing I just had an update on, the never-ending hailstorm back from September. So we actually have numbers back. Maurice is working on just getting them to where they need to be with the companies that submitted. Um, the, the reason this is taking it as long as it is, is we are not required to follow a formal bidding process or anything with this work because Allicap is the one that's going to be paying it. So we don't have to, we could go with the highest bid if we wanted to, it does not matter. Um, but the issue is, is we wanna keep the total amounts low enough that we can upgrade our shingle roofs to twenty-six gauge metal to then hopefully match when we do get a concession stand out at the Titans Activity Complex that it will match. Um, and that, so as long as we stay under a certain dollar amount, we can include all of that and there was no additional cost to the district. So I met with Maurice last week and we are just, the companies we wanna work with, he's going to go back to and try to get some numbers down a little bit to make sure that we're all comfortable with it.
Maybe a great plug for how great Allicap is.
And Maurice.
Yeah, oh Maurice is great.
Maurice is, Maurice is really, really excellent. Yeah. So it's just, it's taking a little bit of time, but I fully expect that the spring of the door will start. Uh, we just need to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck with everything and that we can get as much done as possible under the dollar amount that Maurice has. So quickly on the Titan Activities Complex, as I shared, our Future Planning Committee is going to meet. Um, we're gonna get all caught up to speed with, with everything, both from a fundraising aspect and a construction aspect. Uh, minus, uh, there was a period of time where it was super dry and we had some cracking on the baseball field. Um, and Nimaah got some cold feet and they brought Terricon out to take some more core sampling. Um, but working with Hausman and working with Gana Construction, um, we were able to resolve the issue and remedy the issue at no cost to the district. Hausman actually came in with um, ground defars and did a bunch of topsoil work, everything enough that Nimaah could progress forward. Um, and now if anybody thought we were behind schedule, we are right on schedule for the completion date. And from a tennis sports standpoint, depending upon weather, but we're within two weeks of them being able to pour concrete. So.
We're in good shape.
Explain this cracking, I, you know?
Yeah, Craig's gonna have to do this because this is outside my realm of expertise.
What's, what's this cracking? That has, that has to be like, okay, I, I know what a crack in the ground is, but I mean.
This, it's, well, I'll make it easy for you.
Yeah, make it easy for me.
I'll make it easy.
I like that.
Okay, so that top, however much, remember how we had to put the fly ash in there?
Right, right, right.
So that way, because we have glacial till basically out there.
That's right.
And it would expand if we did. So we, we put all that fly ash in there. Well, then it, we get it to optimal moisture, we compact it.
Yes.
At optimal moisture, compacted, they use their little probes, they test it, everything gets approved. Well, then on all that that didn't get rock put over it, so there was a portion that didn't have the rock completed. So that all freezes, right? At optimal moisture, that all freezes because it gets down to zero here, what, a month ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Hit that zero, whatever. Well, then that dries out. Well, it wants to dry out anyway because it's got fly ash sitting in it. It wants to dry out. So that top two, three, four inches dries out because it untawse, but it's, it's just taking all the moisture out of it because it froze and now the moisture's gone. So it was nothing wrong, it was just Mother Nature. And if you were to go peel that rock off, so that's the part that's always challenging, that's tough to know what to stand behind and whatnot to, because if you wouldn't pull all the rock back on all that that was already done, so it's approved.
Approved, yeah.
That's all dry underneath there too. Cause that rock's only four, six inches deep. Well, that all froze. So say it was twenty percent moisture, that all froze underneath there, it froze a foot deep. So then all that, once it untawse, because it froze and it's got fly ash in it, but that's also why it sits there and it can't heat. See what I mean? So that's why you put it in there because it can't heat when it freezes. Cause if there's no room for that soil to go, it's gonna heat. Where you put that fly ash, you put all that in there, that makes it so that it's not that, but it's only optimum. To be quite honest with you, when you do that, the optimum moisture, the optimum compaction on anything you do is optimum for not very long.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it changes.
I mean, just common sense, it changes.
So why don't the rest of it go that route too?
Because it was already rock put on it.
Because the rock.
And.
Approved. Okay, but if you scraped that rock off, would there be cracking there?
But it, but it'd be consistent. No, no, because the rocks filled that in, so you wouldn't physically see it.
Oh, they would've filled it in, okay.
Well, the rock would.
Would fill it.
It's packed in, whatever, so it's kinda held the moisture, but the point is it's consistent.
Yeah.
So it's all moving together.
Okay.
It's like I told Derek, it was, no.
Okay.
It's all moving together.
Yeah, okay.
So whether Mother Nature's doing, even in your yard.
Yeah.
Up underneath your.
Right, 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 right.
Whatever. If that's all good soil and done properly, at least it's doing it together. So you don't get any inconsistency. Whether it be under your garage doors, under a walk door you got. You know, that's why you do all those is they do it just in hopes that it's all consistent. Normally where you get a problem that is just, there's just no avoiding it, not in this case, but say at one of your homes, is you get something you think's all lean clay or all proper, you do it right. Well, then what if you get a chunk? Cause you know, other glaciers came through and Mother Nature puts all the dirt in there, it's inconsistent-ish. You know, you know where there's areas of lean clay, glacial tills, sand, black dirt, so on and so forth. But you'll hit on projects or homes or whatever, you might go dig a basement on a home, find three different soil types in one basement. So that's how you get inconsistency. But in our case, as long as it was consistent, like I told Derek, there's no, then one, as long as we do it all uniform, there's no risk to the district at all. So we took and ground thought, all that, there was no rock on, totally took the frost out. So back to where we were however long ago, reconditioned that top, re-combacked it, got it optimumed, put the rock over on those sixty degree days, now it's all the same.
So that's why you had to thaw it out.
That's why I had to thaw it out because it was inconsistent with all that rock sitting there on all that that was done properly.
Yeah.
But it was done. So then we had all this, it was exposed dirt, that it's doing the same thing under the rock, you just can't see it.
Yeah.
But that's why, that's why it was so dry.
So how big of a space was this?
Uh, it was probably, oh, they have a little map that they gave us. I, I would say there was probably a third or a half.
I was just gonna say a third.
I, I'd say about a third that we had to ground. Well, I brought three big ground thaw units or four big ground thaw units out and our guys in there laid it all out and they ran for about two days, even went at a sixty, so it was totally undone.
The third of the field?
A third of the field.
Mm-hmm. Oh, so when sixty, I forget that.
Yeah, oh, it was, it was a big, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You had to giddy up for a few days. I'm not gonna, it's not easy sitting here, but yeah.
No, none of that sounded easy.
No.
No, I mean, that's huge.
I'll tell you what's even harder is so it was, I told Derek, I was probably honoring. Uh, it's getting close to sixty and those guys weren't out there. Well, we had our guys, it really bothered me at the tennis courts for all of our face.
Hmm.
It was really bugging me at those tennis courts. Not the fact that it hit the water and all that, it wasn't that. But the fact that it was behind, I did not want any of us to have to look patrons thinking that we had favoritism to the baseball program. So that was really bothering me personally, okay? So here it turns, that all happens, well, it's zero when we finally get, it's literally zero. There isn't a truck moving or a machine moving in town. We're firing up machines and we're out there, we only ran over one truck, one kid's truck and a car. But other than doing that, other than doing that, it was cold as ever. And we got all that tore out and put back in and approved. So it was back on the schedule, just like the baseball field. Well, then a week goes by and getting close to forty something like.
How come I don't make it out there?
So I just asked those guys and asked Derek and it was really not that big of a deal because they had guys sitting in them. So it's not that big of a deal, but it, yeah. Long story short, we're in really good shape. But it's still not done, so I mean, it's, we gotta still keep both feet on the gas.
I was gonna say, so, so, but you know, sooner we get something done with it, that would've been better off.
Well, just to get it done, just moving forward, even if it's half speed, it's winter. If we can get it, even if it's a half speed.
Yeah, yeah.
At least we're moving forward, in my opinion, just to get it going.
I'm, I'm, I'm glad it got fixed though. I'm glad it got identified. I'm glad all those things, even though it might push us back, whatever. I mean, that's the important thing.
Yeah, they've all done, I will tell you this, that Hausman, Derek especially has managed the, the part of it that he's need to do and oversee, hats off to Derek on how he works with all of them and coordinates with them and the emails and all the things that I know you don't all see. He does a fantastic job communicating that, he's got their respect for sure and those guys of all. We got the right team out there, I will tell you that. I was, I was proud to see that because from Hausman to the Nimaah guys and some of those electric, you know, the ones that hit that waterline, they didn't feel good about that. I mean, that wasn't, it's my giveaway to that intended. It, it's all good results. We got the right team, we're, we're winning the race. The fundraising committee has worked their tail off. I feel bad for that situation. I know I'm kinda getting off the subject, but anyway, yes, we got a good thing going on there. It'll be fine. We'll get it done. I don't know exactly what the completion date is, I forget what it was, but I think we're, we're definitely.
We're, the completion date is always hinged around the start of tennis and baseball. And it's still being communicated that they will at least be able to practice on both of those sides.
That's right.
Yep. I haven't seen a hard number yet or a date.
Yeah. So anyway, that was a long explanation.
I was supposed to. No, I, I need, I wanted to know because I mean, you know, cracking didn't tell me much.
It just dried out.
It had to be more than what a crack in the ground is, you know?
It was cube ice.
Yeah.
And then it untawed and because it wants to dry out anyway, the top dried out, you know? And then once it, at a certain point, there was still moisture in it because it hadn't worked its way down that far. But it, it wanted to dry out and it did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
About foreign strategic plan goals?
Yeah, we're gonna turn this over to Morrison and Dr. Bolinger. They, they've been pretty quiet in this meeting.
We've been very busy. Um, so for one point one, yeah, we will tag team this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so on January thirtieth, we met with our district MTSS team for quarter three. And we always start with um our school improvement goals and how they're they're tied to MTSS. Um, which are also tied to our strategic plan. So we always like to start there um and look at our action steps that we're working on and make sure that we're going through. Um, and updating everybody on where we're at. Um, one of the things that we talked about was um family mental health resources. And how do we do a better job of communicating those to families? So we have them on our website somewhere. But there's oftentimes um times when I don't think that families know what they, where to look or what they are. And so we talked a lot about how do we not only talk about um community mental health resources, but like, what are some things that we also do at school that that families may not be aware of? And so um I think that comes back later too in part of this discussion tonight, but we talked about that. Um, we reviewed our self evaluation from a year ago. So our MTSS team did a self evaluation um with our Nebraska MTSS representative on, I think it was April last year. So we really kind of wanted to bring that back in front of them to see like, what were the areas where you rated yourself low or we were in the red? And how are we doing on those at this point in the year? And so we got some really good feedback from them and some really good growth. Because part of those became part of our tie to the strategic plan and our school improvement goals. Um, so we've really been hitting those hard this year. Um, we had buildings share feedback on just Character Strong, how they're all using it in their buildings. Um, so both at our school improvement meeting and MTSS this time, we spent some time letting buildings talk so that other buildings could hear like what's happening in other buildings. Because we're right here all together, but oftentimes we don't realize everything that's going on. And that was really good. Um, the elementary talked about, um. And so specifically, they talked about um their SEL components to our school improvement process. Um, how they use our Character Strong program. Um, and then also some future plans that they um have in type in terms of our SEL programming. Um, let's see. In April, we will then also come, well, the consensus was that every building is doing a really nice job, tier one and tier two. Small groups um with SEL. And then their consensus was they want to continue to use the Character Strong program. And what they'll do is they'll get all their feedback from their buildings and we usually go through that with our school improvement teams in the summertime and and do that kind of planning for the next year, so. Um, in April, we will do that self evaluation again that we did last year. So again, our Nebraska MTSS representative will be with us and she was does some activity to make that a really good time for everybody. When you're going through all those indicators on on growth um with MTSS. Um.
And then we're also looking at kind of the backside work of MTSS. So how do we document, how do, what's the paperwork that we're using? What are the tracking systems that we are using? Um, and really focusing right now on how that can lead to better transitions as we come up on the end of the year. And we're thinking about students transitioning between grades and definitely between buildings. Um, so while we spend a lot of our time talking about, you know, the great things that are happening and allowing folks to talk about that. We are also taking time to think about, you know, kind of that most bureaucracy side of it, but, you know. The piece that is really important of how do we have those systems and structures on the backside that support um continuity of of these supports for students long term. So we've also been talking about that during those MTSS meetings as well.
Um, strategy one point two are, so Mrs. Terry and Mrs. Carney were going to be here tonight. They would have talked a little bit about some of the things here, but in particular. Our reading strategies teachers at the middle school level have been piloting two two programs, IXL, Read 180. And then there's a component, a different component of Read 180 called Read 180 Flex. And then we're also having some teachers consistently continue to use Lexia, which we've already had. So what we wanted, what we want to know is um are there better um ways to provide reading interventions at the middle school level? And revamping that flow chart like we did the elementary last year. Um, and so the teachers have done such a great job of pilots can be kind of hard because it kind of disrupts a little bit what you've been doing in the classroom, but. Um, and we we have to do training, Mrs. Terry and I, and um to help roll some of those out. And then the teachers also had to go through some training components of each of those programs, but they have done a really nice job. Mrs. Terry has structured um some Zoom check-ins with them and she's in their classrooms and I've been in there too. Um, just to see how things are going. She's also, we've got a kind of a look for sheet that we want to make sure that everybody is giving us feedback on the programs that. Um, they're trying out. And then we also spent some time, what day is this? Um, the day yesterday, going through, um, just wanted to see the data platforms. So what what each of those provides for us, that what is it telling us about kids and their growth? Um, so we spent some time looking at that yesterday together. Um, so that's going well. The pilot's going well and we'll continue to do that and and kind of get our feet wet there and make a decision on what to do moving forward.
And then thinking about those tier three supports specifically through special education. This year, really looking at what are the interventions that we have in place? What are the things that we're using? Um, and as well as what are the progress monitoring tools that we're using? What assessments are we using for that information? Um, we've gotten to a place where I feel like I have all of that information of what we're using. And so now we're taking the time to look at where are those holes? Um, and we've already had the opportunity this year to to purchase some curriculum. Um, our elementary, for our elementary building, we went ahead and purchased the Wonder Works curriculum, which is what we use for our our other interventions as well. We purchased that for our special education K two teachers, um, which has been great. There's a lot of tools in there. Um, that are really applicable to those beginning learners. Um. But for other buildings, looking at um things through the pilot, so our special education teachers are taking part in that middle school reading pilot. And we're talking about those things, kinds of pieces for the high school. Um, as we move into that work, but then also globally, as I said, what are those holes? Where are the places where we need to either um explore resources that maybe we haven't used in a while? Um, do we need to look and see what kinds of things are out there? Um, talk to some of our resident experts because uh we've we've had some new hires who have come from to us from outside of this district. Who have some things that they've used and they're excited to share about, so we're really now kind of moving into that learning stage. Um, and then thinking about what is kind of a long term timeline for for putting in place some of those interventions. Um, you know, to to really. With a focus on being fiscally responsible with that because interventions become pricey real quick. You know, and so um how can we get what we need to make sure that we're supporting students but also be responsible? Um, with it from a financial standpoint as well as just a fidelity of of implementation standpoint.
And so through that too, like for for our Lexia program, we've had it for a while. I don't know that it's always been used effectively, so we've really. Heather's kind of dug into that and and kind of brought it back in front of the teachers to say, like, the program's actually a really good program, I'm like, if we're using it the way it needs to be used, so. So that's been good work. Um, strategy two point one, I kind of outlined the implementation of Character Strong out um in one point one through the buildings there. Um, let's see.
Two point two, um, this is really overlaps with some of the things we're talking about. And again, similar to an update we've we've provided before, we're providing those tier two and three, uh, small group and individual. Uh, SEL interventions are there in place in all buildings. And then um two point three, speaking specifically to Derek, our L H P and how we're utilizing that. Um, he and I met in January, went through all of our students. I think I spoke a little bit about that. We've now moved on to um talking with our, each of our building MTSS teams and making those recommendations for new students. And so I know this past week, he started with at least one new student uh that we've received paperwork back on. And so that we could get that that ball rolling um there, but I'm excited about that. He is also working with us to update our community providers list. And then I've asked him to think about too, what are some kind of like quick reference tip guides? Um, that might be beneficial for us to have available to parents to perhaps supplement what we already have um on the website. The other thing I probably should have put in here that I didn't, but I'm also working on kind of what is, what is our vision for mental health supports within our district? And so how do we take all of these pieces that we're doing um and move that into um kind of a a consistent framework? Um, to to build off of this, knowing that this is is something that specifically was identified through the the strategic plan. And so looking at all of the resources that we have available, thinking about our new counselor. Um, thinking about just what that has opened up the availability for us to do. Thinking about how we use Character Strong as both a tier one and a tier two and three resource. And just to, as well as our work with restorative practices of trying to bring that all together.
Question about Derek. Um, it you, it says students we have identified that can go to him. How are those students identified?
Yeah, so we identify them through our MTSS process at each building. So um it would typically be students who are moving into either an additional layer at tier two. So they've been receiving probably some small group inter, they're for sure receiving check in, check out. Oftentimes, they've been receiving some small group intervention as well, but we see a need for a higher level of care and support. Um, we also put in place some decision rules, things like if we knew that they already had a provider outside of school. We weren't going to recommend those to go through him because we, you know, his time is limited.
Right.
Um, and so we want to, we want to think really hard about who are the students? Um, that need that support, that aren't able to access it in other ways. Um, we also think about what are the other supportive measures we have in place for that student? Um, so a student who currently doesn't have a teammate, doesn't have a Norris neighbor, um, that we're identifying some of those concerns, they pop up a little bit higher. There because we don't have other supportive measures in place. Um, and then the other part is um, there's a handful of students that he's worked with this year where really it has been in response to pretty substantial. Um, mental health crises. Where they are not getting ongoing supporting care outside of school. And so um but families have, because families do have to sign off and be willing to utilize his service. And and I'll be honest, we have some families that we've offered it to who have said no. Um, I, by and large, the families we've offered it to are very grateful for the opportunity and to know that it's here at school and it's not someplace else to get their kid. And um, you know, I'm sure as many of you know, mental health providers out in the community. It's weightless and it's, you know, it it can be challenging for all families to work through that. And so typically, families have been really um have been really. Appreciative of the option of doing this, but we have had some that have said, said no. Um, but we've had at least a couple of situations where students have had some pretty significant mental health concerns. Haven't been utilizing ongoing therapy outside of school. Um, and we've approached parents and there's a number of reasons why they aren't um accessing those services in the community. And so then um we've been able to provide that support here at school.
And we will still have it next year, right?
Yes, yes. And we're at least exploring the possibility of increasing um his time for national.
Okay. Is that a fair statement?
It's a fair statement. Yep, we have a lot of conversations regarding that contract with D S U.
Okay. And then also Jill might be able to take up some of that slack as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, that will be definitely something to explore and to and talk about from a district level. Um, how we want to utilize that given that she does have.
Yeah.
That piece as well, which is great.
Thank you.
I've shared all the the updates through other updates, so.
So you want to go three point three?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, whoops.
Is that where we are? Three point three, okay. Um, so Mrs. Carney, who is one of our instructional specialists and was going to be here tonight, but will be here next month. Um, and I have really been working well, and Mrs. Terry last year, on that building out of the three year teacher support model for the district. So, you know, we're three years in, what does it look like from year one, year two, year three in terms of teacher support, what what they need? Um, and so she's been working really hard on that and done done a really nice job and she'll share some of those things next month. Um, our school improvement team in our last, in our November meeting, wanted to do another teacher or staff retention survey. Um, and so we did that and then we met and talked about the results of that this last week. Um, and I did bring some of those along with me. It was, there were eighty six all staff um folks that filled it out. Um, and so I dumped all of it into chat G P T, honestly, and it meant some nice little categories for me here, and so I thought I would just share those with you. Um, the main reasons, one of the questions that they wanted to know on our school improvement team was. Um, what was your main reason for choosing to work at Norris? Um, and so number one was community and reputation. So many respondents decided that Norris has strong sense of community, supportive environment. And positive reputation as a key factors in their decision. Um, the district is known for its close knit feel while offering ample opportunities for students and staff. Um, second category was family and personal connections, so a significant number of employees chose Norris because their um children attended or currently attending school. And wanted to be on the same schedule, or they had a personal tie to the district, like they may have attended here themselves or have family members here that or that worked here. Um, number three was location size. The school's proximity to Lincoln and surrounding area was a major factor. Uh, many appreciated the balance of the smaller school field with opportunities of a larger district. Number four was category was job availability and career growth. So several mentioned that Norris had an open position when they were searching and then others highlighted that the district's reputation for professional development and teacher retention was a reason that they chose Norris. And then the fifth category was just positive experiences and recommendations. So many respondents had heard great things about Norris before applying. Um, either from friends or colleagues or personal experiences such as student teaching in a district. Um, overall, Norris is valued for its community oriented culture, strong reputation, family friendly environment and ideal location. Um, and then the second um prompt was what keeps you here? So again, community and relationships, so they, many describe Norris as a family and appreciate the positive culture. Um, support and trust, many feel valued and supported by administration with autonomy for teaching and professional growth opportunities. Um, another category was students and families, excellent student behavior. Um, great families and a focus on student success contribute to their satisfaction. Location and convenience, again, um, pay and benefits was another one category that popped up frequently. And then just the work environment and job satisfaction, so enjoyable teaching experiences. Um, independence in their roles and a positive workplace culture encourage the staff to stay. So some of the concerns that came up were still would be student behavior, which is, you know, pretty much one that pops up in every school district, I think. Uh, but overall, Norris is seen as a great place to work and a strong community, so. Those are just some of the things.
Yeah, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Good to hear, yeah.
So, yeah, that that helped us, you know, have some conversations at our school improvement meeting because those are some of the things that they asked me to ask all the staff, so.
You know, I guess this applies to another point, I'll bring up about the annual report and I mentioned about how great it was when we see the results we have. But I also really appreciate that even though we're an outstanding district. We're seeing evidence to continually try and improve it. Um, and it was through these kinds of things that it's important, so we don't rest on that laurel. We just continually try to see how can we make it better, how can we make it better? It's just great. We appreciate it.
And it's interesting, we were reading the Coaching Effect book, which talks about stagnation, that's just one area that I don't, doesn't sit well with me. And so, um, so just we had that conversation on our administrative team yesterday about the importance of that continued growth and. Um, you know, focusing on our school improvement goals and things like that. And when you see that in your your building reports, that means that they, well, first of all, they're smart people and they have a firm understanding of the importance of school improvement. And always looking to push their staff and push themselves to be better, so. Um, you, there's great people in place. They're doing really good things, so.
It's a journey, not a destination.
It is a journey, yeah.
Okay. Is that all?
Yep.
Okay, board reports, do you have some?
Yeah, I do. I drove through quick because we're late, ready. Uh, the bus drivers meeting that we had with the negotiations, that was good. It was good. It was, that went well. Uh, they really appreciate the fact they got to communicate with the committee. Yeah, which hasn't been done, I guess, for years, you know, which many, many, many years. They used to do it, but they don't do it anymore. Uh, not not sure about what, where we go in the future with it, but uh, it was, it was good. It was, it meant a lot to them and I know we talked about this bus driver situation last fall. So this way it was a good follow up to that. Got to hear. Uh, also, uh, we had another meeting of our Nebraska quality beef for Norris. Uh, and will, it's progressing, it's good, it's changed a lot from what we probably started out with, but that's okay. Uh, we're still working towards uh good Nebraska beef in Norris School, so. Um, it it'll, it'll be neat, I think, in the end. Uh, the board. Uh, the board handbook, uh, that Marcia's putting together, if we go back, this is two years, we believe now, uh, that we had and we met at N A S B at our retreat and committed to helping build this, you know, the first one for the state of Nebraska. Uh, and, um, I went ahead and I did my evaluation on the one that she put out, which by the way, she did a lot of work on, she's, she's put a lot of effort into that, got a lot of good information. Uh, it was, it was fun sitting down with her, and Dr. Joel was there too, that, uh, for about an hour, so that, that went well. So really appreciated that. Also had, uh, did it, uh, get on the meeting with the Zoom meeting with Marcia on the Board Leadership Academy program that she started this year, and, uh, of course, that conference coming up, the Open Meetings Conference is part of that. Um, let's see, I think that kind of, uh, that, that's good, uh, the rest will be talked about later, so. Great, I believe.
Correspondence items?
You have one there.
We have a thank you from Paul Gayna and Craig and Lori Gayna, flowers that they received, we're gonna be sharing. Want you to know our perks and our thoughts and our questions, we appreciate your friendship, everyone, for sure. We're still there. Anything else? None, there came emotions.
Who did, or?